Let's call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 14th. We've got a lot of community groups in the audience today, so let's get right to it. Let's start with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got a lot of people in the audience today. Is there anybody here for a public comment for an item that's not appearing on today's agenda? No, I recognize most of the faces, so, all right. We'll move on then. Any additions to the agenda from either Commissioner? No? All right. We have some meeting minutes from October 31st. Any changes? Here's Gary. Any changes or alterations to those meeting minutes?
No.
We'll take a motion then.
I will move to approve the minutes from the meeting held October 31st, 2023.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting held on October 31st. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Shall I put a little padding here for you, Gary?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, okay. All right. So, under announcements, we have a big program here this morning from the Belfont Hometown Hero Program, which is presenting donations to five local charities. And I'll call up Sally Hauser and Deb Berger to kick that part of the program off. And Cecil's already with the camera, right? All right, very good.
Okay. And Hometown Hero banner program falls under Historic Belfont Incorporated. And we did one, it's almost two years ago that we did it, but due to things beyond my control, I wasn't able to give this money away. We weren't able to give this money away until then. So, anyway, we want to, we love our community and we like to give back as much as we can. And so when we have this, we give to as many entities as we can. I do want to say that after 14 years with Historic Belfont Incorporated, I am going to retire in February of next year. That's when we have our elections. And so if there's any, we do have somebody interested in taking the realm, which is great. And so I've enjoyed my tenure with the, I wasn't always president, I was president for the last eight years. So, but we've done many wonderful things and given back a lot to the community. So without further.
You've done a wonderful job with Historic Belfont. We all appreciate it. Thanks.
So, thank you. We're going to give away some money now, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay. To Rising Hope.
How do you want to say the different names?
If we can call up Lisa DeHass and Cindy Coker. This is an organization that is an equestrian that works with PTSD veterans in the area. So we are very fortunate to have them and very happy to be able to give them a donation. So do either of you want to say anything before we move on?
I would just like this, Cindy Coker, I'm president of the Board of Rising Hope and also one of the founders of the organization. And I would like to say thank you for all the support that we've been receiving from the members in the community, other businesses as well. We've had the organization for seven years now. We have about six or seven veterans that are very involved in our program. We're looking to grow that. So if anyone has, anyone they know that would like to be part of our program, we would love to have them. And again, I'm very appreciative of the support that we're receiving. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could call up Bobby Salvannish with the Logan Fire Company, number one. All of these that were given away today are heroes in our eyes. This is not just for the veteran heroes. These are heroes that help out the entire community. So we're very happy to give the Logans a donation.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. And if we could have Rich Kelly from the Undying Fire Company. Again, we are so fortunate to have volunteer fire companies and to have two of them in our area is outstanding, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we can have Kevin Korman and David Sexton from the Belfont Union Cemetery Association. When we had mentioned this, that we were going to give to the cemetery association, a lot of people said, why are you doing that? Well, if you realize that the Union Cemetery is a very old cemetery, we have a lot of Civil War veterans in the area, a lot of their markers need to be fixed, replaced. So we're very happy to give them a donation, that that's what they will be using the money for, is for veterans' graves to repair them. It's okay.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin.
As new president of the Union Cemetery, you know, it is a big task. We have over 970 veterans buried at Union Cemetery. So this, you know, donation, which is very generous, it will definitely help us get a lot of these cemetery stones replayed, repaired and set up again. So we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Belfont EMS, which is represented by Brent Metley.
Thank you so much.
And we definitely appreciate having them in the area. Thank you, Brent. There you go. Yeah, I'd like to say our last go-round, we had 68 veterans that we put up through the downtown of Belfont, and we will be doing another round of them in 2024. So please, anybody that would like to honor a hometown hero, be looking on HBI website as well as Belfont Borough website in early spring because the information and the application will be going up at that time.
Wonderful.
So thank you very much.
So where would they find that?
On HBI, Historic Belfont Incorporated.
Right, is that .com, .org?
Historic Belfont. I don't remember.
I just typed into Google.
Just type in Incorporated and then it'll come.
All right, just type into Google.
And Belfont Borough.
I don't think it's .com.
No, it is .org.
It's .org.
.org, all right.
And if you can't find it, check one of us out. We'll be able to help you.
Yes, we'll be able to help.
We'll get it to you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much for coming and making the presentation of the donations to five different organizations here in Center County. Commissioner Concepcion, anything you want to add?
Thanks for being here. It's really inspiring to see the work these groups are all doing.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
The funny thing I didn't say was we gave $70,000 away today.
Oh.
$7,000, yeah.
Nice.
$7,000.
Good.
So that's a lot of money for a little organization.
Anything you'd like to add, Steve?
I just appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into what Deb and Sally have done with the Hometown Hero Program, but mostly, you know, to give back to the community like this, it's going to have a big impact and we appreciate that.
Great, so $7,000 to five local charities. And as Steve said, it's a lot of work and it does brighten up downtown Belfont to have those banners hanging from the light poles. All right, we will now move on to our 2024 tentative budget adoption. And I saw Richard was out in the hallway with some binders, so we'll give a minute for the various charities and nonprofits and volunteer fire companies and ambulance services to head back to their busy lives.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. So this is, this is just the proposed budget. Few things might still change in the next couple of weeks, but we're up against having our budget in on time for the 223rd year in a row. So I'll hand it over to Richard.
Yes, what you have before you is the proposed budget. For right now, just take out the handout that will represent the slide presentation you'll be receiving. We'll get into the rest of the information there shortly. Just give me a moment.
It's a big document, Mr. Lord, this governmental budget and accounting.
And your binder will grow as the process proceeds, so. This is just what you need for today. So, let's begin. So there's no increase in county real estate taxes for the 14th consecutive year. The county's total millage, including the capital portion, or the debt service portion, is 7.84 mils, remains unchanged. Growth in assessed values compared to the same period last year, 1.66%, a little bit higher than we've seen recently, a welcome news. A 10-year average value has been about 1.28% and it's been hovering between that and 1.4 for quite some time. Proposed budget reflects a 1.6 increase in real estate tax revenue. Again, that's revenue, not tax rate.
Yes, not tax rate. That's just the growth in Center County real estate continuing on at a slow pace and it's the new properties or the upgrades to current properties that results in that small increase.
Correct.
The total operating budget is 1.113 million, which is a 6% increase from the 2023 budget. Comparing that to the inflation during the pandemic, it's ranged between 6% and 9%, just as a comparison. Total capital is 28.6 million, much larger than you've seen in quite some time. That's focused on the courthouse. The largest project there is the retaining wall, Center Crest renovation, and Willow Bank maintenance and designed for future use. And therefore, the total budget is 1.141.7 million, but that includes the capital. The operating budget is the focus in my mind of that 1.113 million. Revenues, 5.1% over 2023, at 112 million. That includes all funds.
And so that's increase in grants from the state and the feds. Thank you very much for the representatives here in the room. Also represents a substantial increase in interest earnings over the last year due to the hard work of yourself and our treasurer and controller, and also additional fees and revenues from things like the hotel tax.
Correct. And the next slide shows a representation, as you mentioned, the grants is the largest share, followed by the real estate taxes and internal charges and department earnings, which includes fines, fees, charges. And this is a breakdown of the operating budget by category. You have your salaries, benefits, and then the other different categories.
In that first line in the second section, contracted services, that's a lot of the funding for the roughly 100 nonprofits that the county works with to provide human services and a broad variety of other benefits to local residents.
Yeah, the far majority there is reimbursed, I'm sure.
Yes.
Through grant funding. And then this is a graphic representation. You've seen this representation during your monthly finance committee meetings. This does include the capital for this time. It's the total, this is the whole kitchen sink, 1.141.7 million.
All right.
And human services, the people we serve is our main priority, 26% of the total budget. That's more like 36% of your operating budget.
Yes.
Corrections, I want to point out, it shows 16 million.
Yeah.
That's a function, not the prison. That includes probation and other correction. And I provided it to you in this configuration because that's what you've seen in a budget for many years, is that function as corrections, not representing the budget, the prison, but the function of corrections. Other words, they're not under public safety like you do as it's presented in the financial, in our financial other records. The, this proposed budget combines the use of general fund reserves and ARPA money, American Rescue Plan, funding to maintain current funding levels and provision of county services. This still allows us to maintain 11%, 11% of our expenditures are in reserve and that's within best practices. And all special revenues and other funds are able to be funded and providing them with the available resources.
Great, this has been really quick.
We can get into the meat of it over here pretty soon.
Okay.
And then the, going forward, this will kick off a 20-day public comment period and then allowing the commissioners to consider adopting the final budget on December 5th.
Great work, Richard, and appreciate us being a tiny bit ahead of schedule here. Usually we're running a little behind at this point. Are you going to go into more detail or shall we turn it over to the commissioners for comments?
At this point, comments would be appreciated.
Okay, great. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, just, well, first a comment that this represents really a lot of work over the last few months to ensure that we're, our budget is lining up with our priorities, our mandates in terms of what we're required to do, and then, you know, what the community's expectations are for us as a county in terms of the kind of service, level of service we provide. So I think, you know, this, it's been a good process to get to this point. A lot of analysis every month in finance committee meetings. It's been really helpful to be able to track how the 2023 year has progressed in terms of what, how we expected spending to occur and then how it has in actuality. So that's really helped us be prepared for, to be very informed going into the 2024 budget. So, yeah. That's all.
Mr. Dershowitz.
We saw a significant increase in healthcare costs in the 2024 budget. I'm going to remind the board that this ARPA money doesn't last forever and at some point we're going to have to tighten up our belt and make sure that we can function moving forward without those subsidies. I hope that the Center Crest project goes without a hitch and we have no unexpected issues there. But it'd be interesting to see how 2024 treats us in the end because hopefully we don't, we don't see any nationwide economic declines or anything that challenges us, but look forward to seeing how that works out.
It's been a wild ride for the last eight years. I can imagine how crazy it's been over 20. And I know, Richard, you've been involved in literally county government for a large fraction of your career, so you've seen a lot of changes too. But the commissioners very much appreciate you, your team, working with the controller and the treasurer and all the 50-some department heads and row officers to turn this budget in for commissioners' review through the 5th of December, a little early. Oftentimes, we're looking at that at least a week later. So appreciate that very much. And, Lester, is there anything you want to add, John?
Just thanks to Richard and his team. We've worked closely over the last few months to bring this before you and I think it's a very sound budget considering the aggressiveness of the investments that we're putting into county infrastructure to continue the services to the residents.
Great, thanks, John. Yeah, I didn't want to forget, obviously, the commissioner's office, yourself, the deputy administrators and staff put a lot of effort into getting this across the finish line too. We can open it up to questions from the press at this point.
How much ARPA money is in the capital? You have, what, 28 million in capital? Is that added to ARPA? Is ARPA involved there?
The answer to that one, Gary, is kind of complicated. We borrowed about $30 million from the bond issue. We've only spent a couple million, but we have deadlines to have that money spent. And we also do have many millions of dollars of ARPA money dedicated to some of the capital projects as well. So at this point, Richard and the controller and the treasurer and John are working closely together to figure out spending the bond money in the time schedules required is the highest priority. So we'll be spending the bond money first and then filling it in with the ARPA funds. It's a great question. Maria, anything? No? All right, well, glad to see that we're putting forth our 223rd budget on time, nearly balanced. No property tax increase from county government for 14 years in a row, which is very difficult to do. And, you know, we'll have it out there for public review and public comment. All right, Lester, is there anything else? We can move on to, in a minute, to a resolution, but I think first we have to adopt the tentative county budget.
I will move to adopt the 2024 tentative county budget and authorize advertisement for public inspection.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the 2024 tentative county budget and authorize advertisement for public inspection. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So, yes, appreciate all the hard work that went into these documents. As you said, more to come. Very good. All right, and in just a minute now, we'll move on to a resolution in support of the Belfont Kepler Pool. I think Aaron will need just a minute to take the slide presentation down. Thanks, Cindy.
How you doing back there, Mike?
Cindy, can you just use the, Aaron, just run it up there?
Yeah, come on up, yeah.
John, please?
So now the commissioners will discuss a resolution in support of a nearly million-dollar state grant for the Kepler Pool project. And we have Cindy and is it?
John.
John Tucker.
Tucker here to tell us why you're looking for the support and give us an update on the pool project. I know especially in Belfont, the Baldigo Valley and other parts of the county, people are really interested in this update.
Thank you. Thank you for having us, commissioners. My name is Cindy Coons. I'm the secretary of the Nittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority. I'm from Walker Township. With me today is John Tucker. John is also a member. He's the treasurer of the authority. He's from Belfont Borough. And seated in the back is Mike Musser, co-chair, and also from Belfont Borough. So I'll give you just a little bit of history on Kepler Pool and the authority. So Kepler Pool was constructed in 1971. In 2013, the Nittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority was formed to own and manage the pool. The member municipalities are Belfont Borough, Benner Township, Spring Township, and Walker Township. Also, a very important partner to us is the Center County YMCA. The YMCA has been the management entity for the pool for many years. In 2018, a recreational, a regional recreational analysis study was conducted as well as a feasibility study for the rebuild of Kepler Pool. In 2018, the initial planning of the pool began and plans began to formulate for what the redesign and rebuild of the facility might look like. In 2019, a DCNR grant was secured for pool construction. In 2020, of course, that was the COVID year. That was also the year that Kepler Pool was closed due to mechanical issues and structural issues, unfortunately. So in 2021, the, through the grant that was secured, the authority secured an initial design for Kepler Pool and we were moving it forward. It went out to bid in December of 2021 and the bids came in. Of course, the budget was constructed prior to COVID. Bids came in after COVID. They came in at about three times the amount of money that we had, so we could not award the project. So, back to the drawing board, okay? This, the path for this project has not been straightforward. There have been a lot of curves and bumps in the road, but we continue to be very committed in trying to move it forward. So, recent developments. We've secured some additional grants to support the project. Nittany Valley Recreation, Inc. was formed, which is a sister organization and is a 501(c)(3), which allows us to secure other types of funding. Also, which has happened in the last couple of years due to visibility, is local support has increased. We've had local business support and many individual and community donations have come in. So that speaks volumes to the support that's there from the community for this project. In October 23, so just in the last couple of weeks, the final design was secured for phases one and two of the project. And that was the photo that you saw in the beginning and I'll show you some more later. So, just also wanted to point out, because this is important, is that this really does fit in with the Nittany Valley Comprehensive Plan, which was initially done in 2004. It was updated in 2008. And that indicates that, it recommends that communities improve existing recreational assets. Also, in the Center County Comprehensive Plan done in 2018, it identified the following goal, which was to appropriately locate and maintain existing and proposed community facilities, utilities and services for all residents. So, the Kepler Pool project is an initiative that aligns with these planning documents clearly. There are many, many benefits to community pools and parks and I won't read all of them, but just a couple of them that I'll share that are on the screen is that it certainly, in terms of the individual develops physical health, personal development and growth, self-esteem and self-reliance, reduces stress and promotes psychological well-being. In terms of community, we see many more connected communities that play together certainly, strengthens social bonding and develops just strong communities overall and increases community pride. And the economic benefits are that it does reduce healthcare costs, enhances property values and is a catalyst for tourism.
And it teaches children to swim.
And it absolutely does.
Yes.
And thank goodness for our YMCA for being a partner in that. So in terms of project design, the project is divided into two phases. Phase one is the main pool with all of the systems and deckings and concrete and plumbing and electrical that go along with that. In that phase one, we have planned for a splash pad and some play features. So we have recognized that we need to meet current trends in recreation and in particular pool recreation, and so we have to build some amenities in even to the first phase of it to be able to attract young families there. And then in phase two will be our children's waiting pool and some additional amenities. So in terms of next steps, so this application for statewide local share account funds is going to be a pivotal thing for us because it will help us build the base support. We have six yards so far, $1.2 million. We're asking for nearly a million dollars in this grant. That will really position us well to apply for a 2024 Pennsylvania DCNR grant. That's a federal pass-through grant. We have been strongly encouraged to apply for that grant through our project team manager who works out of the Harrisburg office. He has indicated that he thinks that the project will be looked very favorably. And part of the reason for that is that because we have secured already significant amount of local funding and also because the project is shovel-ready, we have plans that are ready to go today. And so throughout 2024, we will also seek a And so throughout 2024, we will also seek additional grants and in-kind support. We think that a lot of the site work might be done through in-kind support, so we'll certainly be trying to partner with some local businesses on that. And then we'll continue to keep up the community fundraising efforts. And so, just to show you a few more pictures. Now, this is our vision, and these pictures align with what the design looks like now. All of that doesn't happen overnight. So, you can see the little note at the bottom that it says, "The rendering shows possible design after all construction phases and if the funding goals are met." So, we start with Phase 1. We build as the funds are available to build. So Phase 1 was that main pool, which is designed to be a competition pool, which we think will also bring some interest to the area, and then a splash pad. And then later, you know, we build some additional amenities to it. It's, you can see that little slide play area in the background on that splash pad. I mean, it's just unbelievable the cost of just one amenity like that, and what that can cost for a pool or a park area. So, we continue to have very, very solid support from the members of the Authority, and I think we're, we're ready to do this. It's time to get it done. So, thank you, Commissioners, for your consideration of this resolution.
Thanks for coming, Cindy and John. I know all three Commissioners are very supportive of this project for a broad number of fabulous reasons. And we definitely would ask our two state senators and our three state representatives to burn some political capital on this one and make it happen. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Concepcion for some comments.
Sure. So, this is a beautiful plan. I really, I think it's exciting to see the eight-lane pool because that will allow you to host swim meets that will bring, could really bring people into the area. Because an eight-lane pool means your swim meet moves along at a pace that means we're not there till midnight. So, which as a parent of swimmers over time, that's been, you know, it makes a big difference. I think what I, I think what's important to emphasize about this project is both the community-building aspects and the public health aspects. Because drowning is one of the leading causes of death for children and teenagers, and having access to a community pool is one of the greatest protective factors for children in consideration of the risk of drowning. So, there's just, there's a lot of research and evidence on that, how much of a difference it makes, and knowing that this is one of the most significant risks to children's lives is, I think, really puts a point on why a project like this is critical. So. And we also know, you know, having, giving kids and families a great place to gather, forming those bonds, as you had said, across, you know, throughout the community. And it's a safe place to be, you know, where kids are being able to recreate and hang out with each other and their families in a safe place. So, yeah. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I think Amber summed it up pretty effectively, but, you know, Belfont's had an incredible history of winning competitive swimming programs, and I would think that this would do nothing but make us even more competitive. It's a great place for children to hang out. It's a great place for the community to build upon itself. And I just, it's not like we haven't enjoyed this thing since 1971. And that's, and it's time, like everything else, after 50-some years, you got to redo and replace and re, you know, reinvigorate. And this, this design you have is phenomenal, and I think we all heartily support your efforts, and we'll do whatever we can do to make sure that this is a success. And I will echo Mark's continued that we need to look at all sorts of ways to encourage the folks that, in Harrisburg and beyond, to help us make this a reality. Because this is a big deal for the Belfont region, and I think it would be very, very effective in solving a lot of the problems that we sometimes like to, like to grasp about a little bit too much. You know, kids need a place to be and a safe place to be, and it does all that, provide safety aspects, community aspects. I just, this will be a community hub for the region, and I, again, look forward to seeing this through to fruition. So, thank you for all your hard work, and it's a big deal. So, make it happen. Thank you.
So I think I'll read the resolution, then we'll take press questions. So it's Resolution 22 of 2023, a resolution to support projects in the public interest from revenues through the Commonwealth Finance Authority, CFA, within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The local share account statewide grants are distributed through the Department of Community and Economic Development. The Center County Board of Commissioners are requesting a statewide local share assessment grant of $999,998. And if you need a million, I'll give you the $2. From the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for necessary renovations for Kepler Pool. So, questions from the press on the project?
Is this the same source of funding? This is the third week in a row we've heard of
Yes.
the county seeking a million-plus. Is this the same source or this?
It's, it's the same source. The expectation is that the pool of money available statewide is going to be in the ballpark of $120 to $140 million. So, we're requesting, I think, upwards of five different projects where the county will be the sponsor. I'm aware of a couple of other projects around the county where a local municipality, which is also one of the possibilities, is also applying. We're hoping to land at least a couple of them. Obviously, the Commissioners, this one's real important to us. It's real important to Greater Belfont and the Baldigo Valley. So, we'd love to see this one get funded. But we suspect there's going to be 800 to 1,000 applications statewide for that money. That's why we're saying this is going to take a lot of effort from our two state senators and three state representatives to get some funding for the Belfont Pool.
Any particular reason it's $2 less than a million?
You have to ask Cindy and John about that.
That's how the numbers came out, as we added up the structural improvements.
Makes it more affordable.
Yes.
Just under the window.
So with this funding, if it is approved and taken on, would that cover the budget for the project, or will you guys still be looking for more to complete that funding?
It will not cover the budget for the project, but what, what it will do is it will position us really, really well to apply for future grants, because this money can be used as match for other grants. So, when we apply for our DCNR grant in 2024, we will take into consideration what we might get through this funding source and apply up to the match that we think that we have secured at that point.
It's a very competitive grant, but since this one doesn't require local match, and yet it can be used to match against other funds, it's a very, very desirable grant pool. We very much appreciate the state legislature making this available. Great questions. Any more from the press? No? Good. Well, thank you very much, and I think we'll move on to adopt the resolution.
I will move to adopt Resolution 22 of 2023.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 22 of 2023, requesting a state grant of $999,998 for necessary renovations to Kepler Pool. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Great. Thanks, Cindy, John, and Mike. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. We will now move on to contracts. We have a contract from the District Attorney, and I believe Denise is here to talk about it.
Hi. My name is Denise Rupert. I am the Center County Stop Grant Coordinator. It's a contract position through the DA's office. And do you guys know what the stop grant is? Do you want to know a little bit more about it?
Give us an explanation, yes.
The stop grant is money that is coming down from the federal government through the state government. It's a pass-through grant through the Office of Violence Against Women at the federal level. And we bring in money, Center County, the grant has been around since the 90s. We have had it for numerous years. Let me see if I can, we, currently our grant funds the salaries for two part, two parts of the salary, not their entire salary, of two ADA's for prosecution, police at State College Borough, and then two or three people, partial salaries at Center Safe. We have, provide training. So, we work from basically, can we prevent the violence against women? And it's not just women. It's all sexual assault and domestic violence. Can we prevent them with education and training? Can we help the victims? And then can we work to prosecute those that offend? We have a, our monthly meeting, a task force meeting, that we meet up at Center Life Link. We have a, I think there's about 60 or 70 actual members to the task force, including community members, hospital members, because the ER, that's where the victims go. We're talking with Center Life Link to see if they want to join in on us. As an EMT, we've got several police borough, police districts that come, DA's come, Center Safe comes, Penn State has a very strong feeling, as well as Mid-Penn Legal brings a couple attorneys, because they work with that, as well as community volunteers who just want to be there to support it. This money is very important, speaking as the mother of a survivor. This money is very important. We need to do the education. We need to do the training to protect our women, to protect all of our children, and, and to prosecute those that do offend, because that's the only way it's going to stop, is if we, you know. So, what I am asking for is the federal government has increased the laws. They want to make sure that things are legal, they're like that, and that we're not using this money for lobbying. So, all I'm asking you to do is sign a piece of paper that says, "You won't use the money from the stop grant to lobby for any reason whatsoever," which is not, I mean, in the general pool of things, I'm talking, we're, our grant is less than $300,000. I laugh. I go, "Yeah, there's, what are you lobbying with?" What? I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying, yes, that obviously, we're not going to use the money for lobbying.
And that, that is all this is. It's just a paperwork thing to make sure that we're filling the federal guidelines, because the federal, they had some time, apparently, and they came out with an entire new set of guidelines. In fact, we are currently revamping all of our protocols on what happens at any situation, from the time we get the phone call at 911 to the time it gets prosecuted. So.
Thank you very much for explaining that, Denise, and explaining just how far the District Attorney manages to stretch those funds to help prevent sexual violence, educate people on the issue, and prosecute the offenders. Any questions from Commissioner Concepcion?
Good explanation. Thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I just want to, all this, all this document does is assure that we do not use this money for lobbying.
That is all.
Okay.
It is a three-page document. Page 2 and 3 are, if you use the money for document, for lobbying, all we're signing off is that we don't use the money for lobbying, and it's required because the county does get over $100,000.
Right. Okay. Well, I'm fine.
Looks like we're ready for a motion now.
Almost approve that the Board of Commissioners sign the certification regarding lobbying form.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving that the Board of Commissioners will sign the certification regarding lobbying form, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Denise. And now I think we have Krista. I think, for a minute there, I didn't think we had you, but now we have you.
I'm here. Good morning.
To explain three items for risk management.
Yes, insurance and safety-related items. So, the first one is to ask for your approval on a loss prevention grant. Our insurance carrier, P-Cor, provides us a certain sum of money every year to help us reduce loss, and we've come up with a project for you today. In the Prithonitary's office, there are side doors to their offices that are currently not locked. They're locked with a key, but not all employees have the key. Sometimes they can be left unlocked when employees go in and out. So, the idea came up to swipe, electronically swipe those doors, and that would, of course, help to, of course, keep our employees safe, but also our records. And I thought that it might be an interesting little tidbit to add in some information about our records. So, the Prithonitary has five years of civil records, five years of criminal records, 5,000 nationalization records dating back to 1800. They have Revolutionary War declarations. They have slave records from 1803 to 1820, and approximately 5,000 confidential files. So, if any of those were ruined, stolen, damaged, that could provide, that would be an exposure to us that we wouldn't want to have. So, swipe doors. The cost is $8,338 to swipe those two doors, and that is the first item that I'm asking for your approval on.
Are we going to vote all three at the same time?
Perfect.
So, just keep going.
I'll just keep rolling. Okay. So, the second item is about our workers' comp insurance. We are ready for renewal, because we do renew on 1-1. So, our carrier has been PMA, Pennsylvania Manufacturers Association, and this year, they provided a great quote to us, virtually a flat renewal. We're at 2.7% increase, but the total amount is $152,288. The reason that it is an almost flat renewal is because our claims experience is really good. That means the number of claims, and also the severity of our claims, which is what we spend on our claims. We actually have, as granted by Pennsylvania, we have a .83 experience mod, which means anything under 1 is great. So, we are in the really great to excellent range for our claims. So, that is the second item, just a renewal on workers' comp. And then the third item is more or less the contract with PMA that we would ask you to sign, and that just defines what our policy deductibles are, that we're willing to provide a letter of credit, because we do have a large deductible. So, it's a 13-page document that we just need your signature on. And those are all the items. Yes.
Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
No, just, so the, the company that we get the insurance through, that, is that what the carrier we've been using for a long time?
We have.
And have found that it's a good fit for us?
We, our broker, Hartman Insurance, has done a great job of vetting other carriers. And to be, to be, to give you a little bit more information, last year, we did a strong vetting, and we went to market, and we were, really had a strong comparison, but we just still came through with PMA because of their service. And then this year, because it was a 2%, 2.7% renewal, and there were a few other reasons that the other carriers in the market chose not to cover a certain part of our policy and that kind of thing. So, across the board, it was just easier this year to do the 2.7% renewal. So, yikes.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Move to add the risk management items 1 through 3 to next week's consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Krista.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And now Julia has a number of different contracts for our human service agencies.
Good morning. The first, I have some contracts for children and youth services. The first two are renewals for places to provide foster care residential services for dependent delinquent youth. The first is a Delphi Village, and the second is the Children's Aid Programs of Somerset County Incorporated. And then the third is a contract, a new contract with Little Bears Daycare, to provide childcare services for children in foster care. And so, and that, that contract is for $10,000, 2,000 of which is County Share.
Cute name, too.
Yeah, it is a very cute name.
All right. Any questions on the children and youth services?
So, with that contract, is it for a set number of children?
With little bears?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, it's, it is, right now, we have a youth that we are having go there after school. And so, it is for one, although if we would have the need, or foster parent would have the need to have another child there, then we would have the ability to have additional children there with the contract.
Questions?
Good. Thank you.
All right. We'll take a motion on this section, then.
I will move to add the children and youth services contracts 1 through 3 to next week's consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding the three contracts for children and youth services to next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye. consent agenda, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right, Julia, you've got a couple more.
Yes, the next one is for aging, and that is a contract renewal with the Phillipsburg Tower Affordable LLC. And that's essentially to be able to lease the space for the Phillipsburg Senior Center. The Senior Center provides activities, socialization, nutrition, congregate meal. So this is to allow us to continue to do that in their space. You'll notice that it is from 2023 through 20, or I'm sorry, 2024 through 2026. And it does include an approximately 3% increase every year, is already built into the lease agreement.
Thanks for bringing that one up. Obviously, the Commissioners are very supportive of our senior citizens in all the different geographies of Center County. Commissioner Concepcion, questions?
So this location, it seems like, is important, because it's kind of centrally located and easy for them to access, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's very convenient, those that live in the tower, towers and then surrounding areas.
We have a longstanding relationship with the towers. That's, that's a great place. Good stuff. All right. Looks like we're ready for a motion.
I'll move to add the contract with Phillipsburg Towers Affordable LLC to next week's consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding the contract with Phillipsburg Towers Affordable LLC to next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. And one more, Julia.
The final is to, another renewal with Crossroads Counseling Incorporated. And that's to provide some services through drug and alcohol, including case management, outpatient, intensive outpatient, recovery support, intervention, MAT, and recovery housing. And so, again, this is a renewal, longstanding contract with Crossroads Counseling.
Commissioner Concepcion? No? Commissioner Dershowitz?
Concepcion.
Take a motion, then.
I will move to add the contract with Crossroads Counseling, Inc., to next week's consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Crossroads Counseling, Inc., to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great. Thanks, Julia. All right. Now we move over to our liquid fuels and fee for local use. And John has a contract for one of the smaller communities in Center County.
Yes, small community, but a, but a substantial project that was undertaken. We are seeking approval of the fee for local use check in the amount of $50,000 to Rush Township for the reconstruction of McCord Road, Casanova Road, and Chestnut Street, as well as Casanova Spur. The total project cost was $3.5 million. And again, the check request is for 50,000.
So another example of that local match money required to pull down the state and federal money.
Yes.
Great. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion? Commissioner Dershowitz? All right. We'll take a motion, then.
I will move to approve the liquid fuels check for Rush Township.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the liquid fuels check for Rush Township. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right. Now we'll move on to our authorities, boards, and commissions. We've got two different boards here. For the Aging Advisory Board, we're appointing Connie Cousins for a term starting today through the 13th of November of 2026. And we have a resignation from Judy Getschwinder, if I mispronounced that, Judy, I'm sorry. Resignation, she served from January 1st of 2021 until today. Then we have four changes to the Children and Youth Services Advisory Board. We're appointing Hillary Harris from July of this year through June 30th of 2025. We're also reappointing Cheryl Speakman and Bill Speakman for the same terms. And then we have a resignation by Judith Machon? Hope I'm, Mashawn. Judith Mashawn, she served from July 1st of 2021 through today. We have a motion to approve the ABC term appointments, reappointments, and resignations.
I will move to approve the ABC term appointment, reappointments, and resignations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the ABC term appointments, reappointments, and resignations, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. And we thank these citizens for their past service and future service on these boards. Now we'll move on to the check run with Commissioner Concepcion.
So the check that I'd like to highlight for today is a check to, or, well, several checks to the Center for Community Resources. They provide crisis mental health counseling with a walk-in location. And with that, I would like to move that we approve the check run dated November 9th, 2023.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the check run dated November 9th, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. We'll move over to the administrator's report with John. I think you've got a meeting schedule.
Yes, we are seeking your approval of the 2024 meeting schedule. The following meeting schedule covers the schedule for the various county boards and committees during the 2024 calendar year. All meetings are held in Room 146 here in Willabank Office Building, unless otherwise noted. Virtual public meetings may be held as needed in accordance, obviously, with Pennsylvania law. The schedule before you is the same as previous years. The only addition that we would like to make note of is that we are adding Monday to the work session schedule, so that we can have this advertised. And then if there is a need to, to have a particular work session on a Monday, we would be covered from a public notice standpoint.
Would it make sense to put Friday on there as well, just in case?
We can.
I'm just thinking, in case for emergency or something, but, I just thought.
Is that something, is that a change we can make here in the meeting?
I think so, because this will be, this will be advertised, so.
Commissioner Concepcion, what are your thoughts on adding Friday?
I think that covers us for any eventuality. Yep.
All right. Okay, so I think we'll probably need a motion to change the work session meeting schedule, I think, just to add Fridays, right?
Correct.
All right. So you'll take a motion on that.
Okay. So I will move to add Fridays as a potential day for work sessions on the 2024 county meeting schedule.
All right. We have a motion and a second to add Fridays for work sessions to the 2024 proposed county meeting schedule. All those in favor of adding Fridays, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right. And now, any other comments or questions on the meeting schedule? Yes, John?
The only thing we'll say is that we will be advertising this public meeting schedule, as well as the previously approved holiday schedule in the CDT next week.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I think we can take a motion, then, on the revision, the revised 2024 county meeting schedule.
I'll move to approve the 2024 county meeting schedule.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the 2024 county meeting schedule with the previously voted-on revision, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right. Now, thanks, John. Steve, do we have any sort of voter registration?
We do not this morning. Hopefully, by next week, we'll be back up and running. Not this week.
All right. They're a little, little busy at the moment. We have several announcements. The Board of Commissioners meeting on November 21st has been canceled to allow the board to attend the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Fall Conference. And Center County Government offices will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. John, any executive sessions to report or hold?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
All right. And the remainder of our public meeting schedule is later today, is a Board of Elections meeting at 3:00 p.m. Thursday, we have the combined Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meeting at 10:00 here at this, in this room. And then we have the Tuesday, November 21st, Board of Commissioners meeting and work session canceled. However, the Board of Elections will still take place at 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday. Questions from the press?
Does the county budget include a salary increase for county employees?
The county budget, I believe, does include a salary increase for county employees in addition to pro-county policy and these step increases. I'll let John say the percentage. I'm pretty sure I know what it was.
It's 2%.
So.
And are there any cutbacks?
Staffing in any departments proposed?
There were a couple of cutbacks proposed from several different departments, just a couple positions, though.
Still have them.
Thanks. Any, any other questions for the, for the board? All right. Unless there's anything else for the, to go to the order, I think we can take a motion adjourned at exactly 11 o'clock.
I'll move to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourned, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.